Welcome everyone to the special planning commission meeting, a continuation as we are looking at the zoning code to support the housing amendment. We do a little falcons.
Vice Chair Targ. Commissioner Krasinski.
Here.
Commissioner Brothers.
Here.
Commissioner Kopsl.
Here.
And Chair Golden.
I'm here too.
Thank you.
Okay, first up on the agenda as always is oral communications. So this is a chance for folks who would like to comment on something that is not on today's agenda. So let's take a look. Anybody here in the schoolhouse? No, and I see Rita Combs online. If we could promote her, that would be good. We're getting there Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment and thank you for the hard work that you've been putting in to get this done. After the past couple of years of not having many planning commission meetings. When there was work to be done, it's nice to see people buckle down and really work this particular item to make it right for our town. My comment is not just flattering, but it is, I wanted to mention about the Weiner bill that's coming up for vote on the 13th. And that's a future senate bill 1037, which will fine cities $10,000 to $50,000 a month for non-compliance of their housing element. It's not passed yet, it's up for vote on 1013, which I believe is Monday. But there are many towns that have sent in notes saying that they are against this. You know, and we have, you know, we have our senate people that we can talk to, state senate people that we can talk to. And we know that voting record, sometimes there's no votes, that person might be absent that day. So we can't rely on that. I think the town needs to send a letter to as many people as possible to oppose this. Because our town, not only can we not afford this, but we're working hard. We're clearly working hard to make this thing move forward. And, and we should not be penalized and other towns similar to ours, we should be in support of them and be against this particular bill moving forward. So any clout we have and any letters that we can even send to other state senators to make this one go away. We, we really should because it is, it is hurting small communities. We are a small community, we are affluent community, but we have no money in the coffers to be doing this and we're trying to do the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online that would like to communicate in oral communications? I see no hands coming up, so we will close oral communications. We'll get to the main part of the agenda. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, I do. Will you share my screen? Okay. So our main item this evening, the commission's here to discuss the zoning code and zoning map amendments. And consider making a recommendation of approval at the town council. My name's Adrian Smith, I'm a senior planner with the town. So tonight's purpose, commission is going to consider adopting a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance to town council. Once they get through that part of their business, they are going to review and refine a list for future consideration. This is a list that was struck at a previous meeting that contains priorities for the planning commission and ASCC. But it's been determined that these items are beyond the scope of the immediate amendments required in the code. So meeting format this evening, first staff presentation, we'll go into clarifying questions, followed by public comments, and then we'll get into planning commission discussion. So this is our list of staff and consultants in terms of who's with us this evening. Myself, Director Herrera's with me up here on the dais. And then joining us remotely is Town Attorney Engberg. And then we have consultants from Lisa Wise Consulting, that's Monica Sidlick and David Bergman. So I'm gonna kind of scurry through these next few slides because I've talked about them at length and I think everybody's up to speed generally speaking. But just once again, our zoning code require, excuse me, zoning code and zoning map amendments are the first step to implementing our housing element. And they do that by bringing our code into conformance with state law and implement programs in our housing element. And the amendments act to rezone several parcels to new zoning classifications as we've identified in our housing elements adequate sites inventory. So without these rezonings, these sites cannot be developed at the proposed densities and affordabilities that we've identified in the housing element. So along with these rezonings, the town has to, may adopt objective development and design standards, which we've decided to do. And they're represented in our draft code. And these need to be nondiscretionary and administered via ministerial review. So all of these standards must be objective and cannot introduce new constraints to developing housing at these sites. So we're all aware at this stage that our housing element is, has been decertified by HCD pending these rezonings. So as soon as we get through the required rezonings and amendments to our code, we're going to submit that back into HCD and we hope that that'll be a quick process. And HCD we don't expect would reopen our housing element. So again, because we're no longer in substantial compliance with state law, we are vulnerable to the builder's remedy. So just quickly, just to remind everybody where we've come in a very short time, but a lot of work has, has gone on in that time. The planning commission first met on March 20th. They decided they wanted to bring the ASCC into the review process. ASCC met in a workshop, excuse me, workshop style session on March 25th. Then ASCC and planning commission convened jointly on April 3rd to discuss ASCC's feedback. From there, ASCC decided to meet one more time in another workshop style session to further refine their recommendations to the planning commission. And they submitted those on to the planning commission for review at its April 17th meeting. So at that time, it was determined that numerous technical standards were introduced that required site-specific feasibility testing. So the consultants needed a bit of time to do that work. So the commission met on May 1st to review another revised draft zoning code. And that incorporated numerous amendments and requested amendments that had been submitted by ASCC and planning commission. Commission decided it needed one more meeting, so decided to continue that meeting to this evening. So since our last meeting, the planning commission and ASCC subcommittee decided to meet again. And review a short list of further discussion items that were remaining after the May 1st meeting. And they also wanted to review some additional site testing that had to be undertaken by consultants, so they did that as well. So to date, we're six public meetings into this process. We've been at it for about 25 hours of meetings. And that's not even counting the additional ASCC subcommittee meetings and then the combined planning commission ASCC subcommittee meetings. So a lot of hard work has gone into this process for sure. So that brings us to tonight's meeting discussion. Again, this is a continuation of our previous May 1st meeting. And the commission is going to review the current draft code. And it has a number of revisions contained within. Those revisions were communicated at the last May 1st meeting. And then there were a few remaining discussion items that the subcommittee took on. And so those recommendations have been forwarded to staff as well and they are also incorporated into this current draft. So the discussion this evening is expected generally to focus on those last few remaining items that the subcommittee worked through. And hopefully that will bring us to potentially a recommendation to town council. And then separately, if the commission wishes to further discuss this list for future consideration, that will be part of the discussion as well. So next steps, the schedule hasn't changed. Town council is expected to meet on May 22nd for its first review of the draft code. And then because they are required to adopt an ordinance, they will need at least two readings, so they would meet again on May 29th. That's our current schedule. So that's it for me. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
So I, I plan to walk us through the document again, kind of just double, I got a couple of things where things we intended to put in there didn't quite make it. We'll cover those and then we'll cover the items that we said which should be looked at by the subcommittee and go through those too. But questions first. I don't know, there doesn't have to be any questions if you want to wait for discussion, by the way.
I guess I have questions about things that we discussed that didn't seem to make it into everybody's zoning code correctly, but it sounds like.
I plan to cover those, yes.
I guess in terms of other questions, actually. Adrian, could I ask you to maybe address the public comment from Tim Clark where he had two specific questions? Basically whether supportive housing overlay could apply to the Ladera church site? Or if a new concept affordable housing overlay could apply?
Yeah, I'll pass that over to Town Attorney Engberg. She and her staff are, I believe, are doing some research or might have some preliminary thoughts on that.
Sure, so in terms of the supportive housing overlay, right now the housing element is specific. That in terms of which properties it applies to, it applies to Jim White's properties as a part of the housing element. So for that to apply to additional properties, we would need to amend the housing element. That said, I did just want to point out that the Willow Commons project that is currently under construction is a supportive housing project that was approved without the supportive housing overlay, but rather under the provisions of state law. And so those are available to really any property in, in, within the town that, that has residential zoning. So that is a path, even if it's not specifically added to the housing element. As far as an affordable housing overlay, I, 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 that, that sounds like a kind of a more complicated endeavor. That I probably want to learn a little bit more about what, what Tim had in mind there. I will say that state law does sort of create an affordable housing overlay, if you will, this under density bonus law. So for projects that include affordable units, density bonus law provides those applicants with a number of waivers and a number of concessions. And it's almost like, basically, I, I think it kind of functions as an overlay. So anyway, I hope that's helpful. But yeah, I think to, to talk about an actual affordable housing overlay, I probably need to know a little bit more.
Thank you. Question? Nicholas, you look like you've got one coming. You have, you get a crease.
Adrian, are you able to promote me to a panelist? Thanks.
Adrian, I'm wondering if you're familiar with SB 166?
Is that the known net loss law? Yes, somewhat familiar.
And it may be that this is, may also be a question for the town attorney. Does SB 166 allow for downzoning or to apply fewer units to a property under certain conditions?
Adrian, do you want me to jump in on that? Yes, please. Yeah, so I don't have it in front of me, but SB 166 or the no net loss generally requires cities and towns with certified housing elements to maintain the available sites throughout the period of compliance for the housing element. In other words, if one site is either downzoned or develops at a density less than set forth in the housing element such that it becomes impossible under current zoning to achieve the RENA goals. Then in that case, there is an obligation on the town to upzone another site or sites in order to make up that net difference. So that's kind of generally what it, what it requires. Commissioner Targ, does that answer your question or was there follow-up?
So for example, if we have a buffer in excess of what's required, and I believe we do have a buffer in the housing element. That could be drawn upon to allow a less dense development in principle?
Yes, that is also my understanding.
Thank you. Now that's, that's the questions I'm going to have there. I had a small knot of consistency questions and I apologize. Some of them are, are items that it would have been possible to have identified before. And this is for perhaps clarification. We use terms site, lot, and parcel in a way that seems interchangeable, including in our new language. So for example, in in the term duplex, we use the term parcel. In the talking about, under dwelling, single family, we talk about, I believe, lot. Under 1804 135, we also talk about lots. And in other areas, we talked about parcels. I'm wondering if there's a difference between a lot, a parcel, and a site? Or if that should be harmonized, doesn't need to be done now, if it needs to be done, it could be done as a after the fact. As it's kind of a throughout kind of issue. But there's a consistency issue and it's just unclear whether there's a difference.
I think one of our consultants, David, did you want to address that?
No, not particularly. I mean, as, there's synonyms. There's no harm in choosing one.
But to clarify, you're saying there's no specific meaning that you're aware of that defines the differences between them?
No, they're synonyms.
Like, like is, is it maybe this a hobgoblin question? But for consistency purposes, if that could be harmonized?
Okay, I'm going to make a note, thank you.
Under our definition of story, we include basements in the certain circumstances as stories. And that becomes relevant in other places where setbacks are involved. If I have a multi-family dwelling that has a subfloor or subgrade basement, then that becomes a story. And that then impacts my setback requirements. Because I now, for example, might have a three-story building and I would be required to recess. But it might not make any sense to do that because experientially, I would be, I would experience a building as a two-story building. Is there a reason why we're including basements as stories generally? Or at least can you help me understand why we're doing that? Or basement serving as garages, that's more particularly. I might have the same issue if I have a tuck under garage, for example, which may become more relevant. If I'm going to build something that feels like a townhouse kind of product.
Nicholas, can you point us to the, the particular?
Yes, of course. In the page 14, and I, it's not a red number, it's just page 14.
Yep.
And it's section 1804 point, I have it as 485.
Yes, yes, that's it.
That seems, that seems like an awful lot. And then I have a setback on page 29 at 18.5.06A. And, and this, I, I may be concerned about a special case here, which can be addressed in an alternate manner. But just generally, if I have a tuck under garage or if I have a subsurface parking, I'm not sure why I'm being treated as having an additional story. And again, that can be relevant or can be a significant issue, for example, if I'm doing a multi-family kind of product. And I'm wondering if everybody's fighting their last war, that issue maybe is mine. But is, is, am I missing, is this a, is this a valid concern? Is this a special case? Is this something that would be handled in the site plan itself? Or should we be addressing the issue of a basement more generally?
This definition of story definitely goes back into earlier drafting. So I'm actually just going to ask Monica, our consultant, if she can share some thoughts on this, how we were thinking about it.
Sure, yeah, thanks Adrian. So we introduced this 1804 485 story, definition of story into the code because the code didn't have a definition of story. And as part of the new zoning amendments, we introduced this three-story height limit for our MF 23. So we wanted to assure the community that no more than three stories would be built. So it's how do we, so if we have a maximum of three stories, we have to say, well, what's a story? What do we count as a story? That's independent of what you kind of, as a basement, basement is defined earlier in the code in 1804 065. We didn't have anything to say about what you consider to be a basement or not a basement. We just wanted to clarify story so that you could interpret that standard. And as far as the standard goes, it's, if that four feet is, is not right, then we'll, we'll make sure that, you know, we'll, we'll hear and listen and make edits as needed.
I ask, maybe we didn't have a definition of story, but we did have a way that we figured out whether we were going to count basement area into the maximum floor area of a house, right? Is this not consistent with that, the way we already count that?
No, that's the same, we keep that same standard and measurement, yeah. That's in a part of the code that is not being amended, so it's not in the packet, but it's later on in the code.
So is that your question though, or was your question if this is like the same definition?
Right, is this the same? Like if somebody builds a house and then they add a basement, and if it's a basement, it doesn't count against their floor area? But if it's, you know, a basement that's above the ground, then it does. Is it not that we count, count that area if it's got this four feet? Four feet above the natural grade criteria? That makes sense?
Yeah, I'll have to go and read that part of the code again. I know there's a part that says what is and isn't counted as floor area. So it would be better if I could take a moment to read that part of the code again.
So if I'm interpreting your concern correctly though, this is something that would affect a three-story building and the setbacks associated with it, that particular case?
Yes.
So and if that's the moment, we've only got the one Ladera church case that could even potentially fall into that?
Potentially. That's to say.
So are you thinking we need to solve?
That, that is to say, yes, but if we are designing exclusively for particular spots in town, there's a, perhaps a different issue with our spot zoning. So we're trying to, we could say it's a matter of generality.
Right. Do you think we have to solve this tonight or is this something that we can put on the list? We can do this.
Yeah, it is.
You're right.
I think that there may be ways. There may be ways of, of dealing with it.
Okay.
So for example, differentiating garage or basement uses garages. And the reason why we wouldn't have dealt with that previously is we, I don't believe we've been thinking about basements as garages. Can I ask one, Paula? Just, I think I understand, but just to make sure, if there's a garage, that's a basement where it's underground, where it's below, where at, at, at the finished grade, then it would not count as a story, right? It's, it's only if it's four feet or higher above the ground, okay?
That's what we say basement is, yeah, exactly.
So the base, I'm sorry, so if I have a, my basement is four feet above ground, then it would be a story. But if it's purely subsurface, then it would not count as a story. I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
All questions? Good. Anybody else? No? Then I believe, oh, nobody in the audience? I'm sorry. Moving to public comment on that. If I'm entertaining that, if anybody in the audience would like to speak on that piece?
I just asked about our agenda, so we had the staff, we had our questions, now public comment and then.
Then we come back to discussion.
Oh, and so you're planning to go through the updates?
Oh yeah, part of the discussion, yeah, yeah, yeah. Is that okay? I think it works.
Sure, sure.
No.
Well, in that case, can I add one of my questions?
Sure.
So on page 40 of the updated zoning code, note number three, it says housing units on 4370 Alpine Road, Bunting Mattor Avenue.
Yep.
Shall be limited to one story.
I was planning to cover that in discussion.
Yeah, I want to ask my question now because I think it could impact the public comment.
Okay, perfect.
So I believe that when we discussed that in our last meeting, we decided that we wanted to include all units, both house, residential and commercial. So was it intentional that this was left out? Was that just oversight?
Yeah, it was, it was unintentional. We were checking the note against the exact language in the housing element. And we saw that the housing element stated housing units, but it's okay to add on that. It's okay to add a broader definition that's inclusive of housing units. So I would call that an oversight, so we'll change it to units, so it's all inclusive.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll come back to it. Yeah. I know. I know. I agree.
Okay, okay.
I agree. But we're going to discuss. All right, I am looking as usual in the normal timing of things. Do we have any public comment on that piece? I see Rita Combs.
I had, just have a question further in the document about parking. Is this that area or should I wait till later?
Your public comment would come now.
Okay, so as far as the, on the last, probably the last two pages, 5960, it starts talking about the previous page. the previous pages is parking, 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 but um the last couple of pages is about the multi-unit uh parking, what is, could and should happen, and that's at the proposed Dorothy Ford Park and at um proposed Ladera Church. And it's just not very clear, because uh we, we don't have bus service in our lovely town, you know, it was canceled a couple of years ago, so it was just that one bus that takes the kids to school, and uh. So it's, it's just not very clear, I'm trying to figure out how much parking then would be there. Um, you know, in thinking about what uh is being proposed to be built there. And uh it was never very clear in the previous meetings, and in looking at the document, it's just not very clear, you know, is, if it's a one-bedroom, then there's one parking spot for the person, if there's two bedrooms, then there's two parking spots. But then there should be a parking spot if they have for guest parking. Is that then three parking spots for a two-bedroom? And where would that go, and it talks about off-street parking, we don't have any off-streets here. Is it gonna be a, along West Ridge? Is it gonna be along Alpine? We really don't have off-streets here, so I'm, I'm not clear on where that parking would be, especially with um, you know, ground possibly being a little unstable, and uh underground parking would just cost so much and, and add to things. So uh if you can clarify, what is the proposed parking plan for those two areas? That would uh, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. And I see seven, five, six, two. Hand up, if we could go to them.
Good evening, my name is Caroline Portongan, can you hear me?
You can.
Great, thank you, so Rita made a very good point, and I would like you to review the minutes of the Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee, because we have discussed this. And uh, we reported back to Rebecca Flynn uh that we want to make sure that there's no on-street parking. Uh, we had several questions, we also asked for rationale why suddenly, um, you know, uh, the places of segregation uh where you demanded five parking, uh, it was calculated five seats per five feet, and suddenly it was reduced to three seats. So far, we have not gotten a response. So um, since I only have three minutes, I will add to another comment, and it's based on what the committee members have mentioned, its clarity and making sure there's no confusion, and this is on the driveway. Um, Portola Valley never had any uh, under the municipal code um eighteen, never had any definitions of driveway and circulation. And we addressed that also, also with the Planning Commission. The municipal code has, in Portola Valley, has definitions under Municipal Code seventeen. And um, I hope that um this committee will look it over again. Um, if you want us to provide more info, we can. Unfortunately, under the previous uh Planning Director, she only advised this uh just before she left the, the position, but um it's important, we need clarity, we don't know why consultants and staff have now added it to Municipal Code eighteen, where Portola Valley has it already under Municipal Code seventeen, and we don't want any more confusion, we want a coherent definition, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I do not see any other hand, oh, yes, in the audience, please?
You press the button.
I'll repeat that so we can hear it online, right?
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm Tim Clark from Ladera Community Church, a property owner in the valley, and support to the valley. Um, I've become a regular in the last two months at these meetings, and I'm hoping someone will tell me where the bathrooms are. Because I can't imagine a schoolhouse that doesn't have bathrooms, but so far I haven't figured it out. You point out there, or you go to, oh, there's an outhouse out there?
Yeah.
Got a half moon and everything.
Pretty nice one.
I, I, I sent a, um, I sent a note to the commissioners uh concerning some suggestions for how to deal with our situation. There were two specific suggestions, asking questions, which I suspect staff or someone else will be answering shortly. Uh, first one was, could we apply the overlay zone concept uh to our property? Specifically, the one that is applied to Willow Common. The second one was, what about the possibility, since you seem unable to change our zoning, of having an overlay zoning, overlay for affordable housing? I look forward to the answers, but I think I know, given the feedback I've received already, what the answer's gonna be, since it's tonight and you're content, you're determined to move on tonight. What I would say is. I've been promised individually and sort of collectively by this body and others, that our situation will be taken care of. I would like to see that in writing, and writing to the Town Council, which is gonna consider your recommendation tonight, and tell them that you still have work to do. I'm aware that there's a list of topics to be addressed in the future. Ladera Church is not on that top, that list. I would ask that it be added, and I would be asked that it be added as a priority, because I think it's important to the cap, the town to make it possible to have affordable housing. Um, so I'm basically asking you to give some concrete indication that you're gonna deal with the Ladera Church situation. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other requests for public comments. I'd like to switch over to discussion.
Can we get any answers?
On the.
On the question, do you?
Sure. Which one?
Well, on, on Tim Clark's last comment, I just wanted to note that I asked that, those questions um before, before you arrived. Um, I don't know if staff wants to briefly summarize, um, and then also I was wondering about Rita Comas's question, and if staff could point out. They basically, uh, clarify, I guess, for Ford Park and Ladera Church, uh, which entries there are gonna specify how much parking is required?
Adrian, do you like me to start with the?
Yeah.
Tim Clark's questions? Sure, okay, great, so um.
He wasn't in the room when you went through this.
That's what I figured, yeah, no problem. Um, so in terms of the supportive housing overlay, um.
If I may, I, I, you don't have to go through this, the, the, the commission has already heard it, I can listen to the tape.
Okay. As for how parking is calculated, it's in table five of eighteen point six oh point one one zero, schedule of required off-street parking spaces. And just for clarity, off-street parking means onsite, so if a.
This is on, sorry, page fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven, yes, correct, of the revised draft changes.
Right.
Um, so when we say off-street parking, we mean that it's provided onsite, so the development has to provide for parking onsite, that's what we mean about that. Um, and then table five itself actually provides uh parking spaces required in ratios based on the housing type, so we cover single-family, we cover multi-family, so for example, with multi-family and duplexes, it's one for each zero to one bedroom, two for each of two or more bedrooms, and then there's guest parking provided in the amount of one space per every three units, uh, housing units. Um, so that's, it's a basic calculator.
And I didn't see anywhere that's specifying on-street parking.
No, you cannot provide off-street parking on-street. That's not, no. Yeah, so a given development is responsible for providing adequate parking for its use.
But I probably would add a little bit to that in that that would apply to the Ladera Church. You still have the issue with Ford Field, some of the zoning, it's my understanding, all of that could be negotiated individually, regardless of what's actually in the zoning, because it's town property.
Right, in other words, this, the zoning code does not, does not apply to Ford, Ford, Ford Park, no.
Right.
Am I right, Adrian?
Well, the, the development on Ford Field would be a multi-family development. So we know it's a, it would be a multi-family use, and we have a multi-family uh definition of parking spaces required, so it's likely that we would turn to this.
Yeah.
Just for consistency.
I mean, anticipated-wise, given that we're presumably turning in a lot of land, we'll have a whole lot of discussion about what really makes sense for the town with a lot more leverage than we normally have in a, in a discussion like this.
And also with a lot more flexibility.
In any case, I rule with what you're working.
Yes. Did we have other? Anything on that? Kim, you had one more?
No, I've had the same one, I didn't, I didn't hear the end, I don't know what the question is about parking at Ladera Church, because I wasn't here.
Oh, the question?
Yeah, I would ask that the answer be repeated.
Basically, it's pointing to the chart on page fifty-seven. Um, is, it's the, those are the general parking regulations that kind of across, park across the board. A particular person had asked a question that's referenced Ladera Church and forty, for Dorothy Ford Field, which is why we answered it both ways.
And so the question was, what are the parking regulations for Ford Field and Ladera Church, and the answer's on page fifty-seven?
The answer's on page fifty-seven for Ladera Church.
Okay.
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's work our way through the list. And I are gonna start with two, with, that we received. Actually, no, let's work our way generically through the document, so if you pull up the May sixth version, Title eighteen zoning. And I think if we go to page five, um. I wanna talk about coverage area, so Carter, I think either you or Rebecca are gonna need to weigh in on this. We had a discussion of coverage, one of the things that came up as a needing definition, when we had our last meeting, was coverage area. And there was a discussion in the subcommittee meeting, and I think subsequent to that, you had some input, and we're trying to figure out what do we need to do, and, and how do we make it be all consistent? And we're, we sort of have to deal with, so that, we're dealing with page five, the definition of coverage area, and then how does it relate everywhere else?
Hey, in, in Portola Valley, coverage area means what's inside the uh, uh, the building walls. You measure to the outside of the walls on the ground floor.
And that's a definition that we've added.
That's, that's the same definition that has always, always been there.
So how would you modify what we have on page five?
Would you put page five up?
Yeah, are we able to do? Well, I'm, I need, I need an answer from the S C C on how to do this, so if Rebecca could, if she's online and wants to weigh in, I would be happy to hear that. I got Rebecca's iPhone on here, I don't know if she's listening, though.
I confirmed with her after she, we had our subcommittee meeting, and this is a question, she clarified it with Carter, and I confirmed with her this afternoon that the definition we have here was what you just said right now. So we don't need to change the definition of coverage area, it is a new definition, before we had a coverage area ratio, and people were concerned that we had the definition of coverage area and the deception of ratio, so it is a new, new subset, so it needs not be changed.
Ah, okay.
Also, in that message after our subcommittee, Rebecca talked to Carter about our use of the word unit, that does need to be changed as it's used in the charts, and those were the two items she followed up with in her home, so this one's okay.
This one's okay, okay, so no change, do we, no change of that, what were the, where were the other two that we have to deal with them?
The other one that was in that email, I don't wanna take you out of your.
No, 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 I was doing, dealing with coverage area first, so let's deal with it.
The other thing we had Rebecca check with Carter was whether or not the unit included the garage. I believe that was the.
That is correct.
And what we have in here needs to exclude the garage.
Correct.
What page are you on?
Yeah, so we're, we're.
I'm solving the problems, I can't figure out. I think it's in the chart, uh, the chart that's on thirty-four, when I hit it with.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
The, the, the unit sizes, you know, were, you know, the reason we were dealing with unit sizes, you know, both minimum and maximum was to deal with living area.
Uh huh.
Yeah, it was not intended, you know, to deal with uh parking area.
That's on page twenty-seven, and the way we have it written is unit size, including garage space that's not shared, and then we have a minimum and a maximum. And I, as I understand Carter's clarification, we need to delete the reference to garage space.
Correct.
Oh.
And we do that on page twenty-seven, yeah, that's why I checked it, I thought, well, this is.
All right. Okay.
And then I think it's also repeated in the chart for AMU, which is, we just stashing through the document here to find it. It is on page thirty-nine. And again, we say unit size, including garage space, so again, delete, including garage space.
Right, so page thirty-nine, under unit size, we delete including garage space.
Okay.
Out on page twenty-seven, we also similarly. Now, that was a little different, it says unit space, including garage space that's not shared. It should just, just unit size.
Just unit size.
Just unit size, perfect, excellent.
That's the change I wanted last time.
So.
Well, you were probably right back then, too. We just didn't understand it.
The two things we discussed in our subcommittee, and then uh, to about two dozen things, and those were the few that were.
Great, all right.
If I may ask, regarding coverage area, it uh specifies that it excludes uh hardscape areas?
That's correct.
Do we need to include any reference to hard space areas, because it's just defined as the footprints of buildings?
No, uh, the coverage area, you know, is intended to be different than an impervious surface area. Impervious surface, uh, you know, we've got it, we're uh recommending, you know, an impervious surface area ratio, uh, which would deal with uh the hardscape areas. So coverage really is a, you know, in Portola Valley, historically, has been about the building coverage.
No, I, I gathered, I gathered that, so I was wondering whether we should just strike reference to hardscape areas generally under definition of uh, uh, coverage area, or do you think that it's necessary for?
I don't think it's necessary, I think it's only uh, only there for clarification to someone who's only looking at that, you know, that item, I, I it may be superfluous, you know, rhetorically, but I think, I don't think it hurts to have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move forward to page.
May I ask, just as a potential related, so directly below unit size in the chart, we have max floor area for single building, all floors.
What page are we on now?
This is page twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven, that same chart.
Page twenty-seven.
Yeah, so right under unit size, it says max floor area for single building, all floors. Do we need, is it, should we consider uh specifying that parking garages are not included in max floor area? Do we need, is it, should we consider, uh, specifying that parking garages are not included in max floor area then?
Thought, if you have a thought on that, Carter, please jump in.
From an expectations standpoint, uh, and because of the cost associated with building garage spaces. I would expect that projects will be built without garages. So I'm not sure it's germane.
Nope, not something we have to worry about at the moment.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I don't know. I might include it.
Yeah.
For the purpose, same reason why one would include the, the.
Okay, so give me your, give me your exact suggestion.
If I could through the chair.
Yes.
If, if someone wanted to include garages in the building, it would make the building bigger. You know, and the, the reason that the ASCC was recommending these limits was to keep the buildings relatively small. You know, so that they would continue to be rural in nature. If you include, include the garages in these, you know, then either the units would get smaller or there need to be more buildings. To accomplish the same number of units. So I, I, I think, uh, that the way it's described, you know, is, continues to be the intent of the ASCC. So that if, you know, a, a design team or a developer would want to include garages, that they would need to count.
I was looking for clarity, uh, and if garages are included, you ought to specify that if they're excluded, you ought to do that too. And we don't have a definition of unit size in the definition section. So.
So, so what would you propose, Nicholas, on that one?
So, as I understand it, we are, that this, that the suggestion is to include garages?
My suggestion is not to exclude them. From, from the counted floor area.
Then we should, uh, specify that garages should be included.
Are included. Okay, okay.
Wait, so what line are we talking about in this?
He's talking about page twenty-seven, uh, the lax blocks.
So do you see?
Back to the ground level and that says max floor area of the single building.
And the same thing as Sausage Truth four thirty-nine.
So can I ask? That, is that, there's an existing definition of floor area, right? Does that include garages?
Yes.
So you would modify the second.
Okay, fair enough. I, I think that's right.
It's already defined?
I, I think the only thing that would need definition is the unit.
We're not talking about unit size. We're talking about max floor area of the single building.
Yeah, I think max floor area is clear. Uh, the, the issue would be to, to define what a unit is. And that the unit would exclude.
Garages. Excluding garage. Would that make people happy? Wouldn't hurt anything?
I like it the way it is right now.
You'd like it the way it is?
Very clear.
Okay.
I think that's what the ASCC told us.
Okay, let's go, let's go with the, I'm with.
Wait, sorry, I don't understand. The way it is right now in the document or the way that has been suggested?
Size will delete the references to garage.
Okay, that's what you meant by the way it is right now.
Yeah, the way we had discussed. We'll save the same it is.
Got it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I'm being a little pedantic on the, what exactly do you mean?
Fair enough. That's both.
Okay, we're good then.
Got it.
Okay, I want to go forward to page nine. And I believe this is one where Ronnie, you were, with your excellent note taking, identified that we did missed something? On the, on the impervious area ratio?
Or they missed something. We just completely botched the definition of the impervious area ratio. So right now it says, the second sentence says, impervious area includes areas covered by buildings. Which is not.
Is wrong.
Right.
So it should say impervious area excludes area covered by buildings. Period. And then, and then continue impervious area includes in the rest of the sentence.
I got it. Thank you.
We got that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright. I'm gonna go forward to. Page twelve, under the definition of a porch, eighteen oh four, three ninety-five. And I believe Rebecca had. Change, suggested a change in the wording. Have I got that correct?
That's right.
And exactly what does it change to? So she's suggesting it should be porch is a type of building entry. With a set of stairs and a potentially raised landing attached to the facade. Porches may be open on two or three sides and may be either engaged within or attached to the front facade. Oh, wait, that's the old. That's. Okay, try to, so rewrite. Porch is a type of building entry with a landing that is potentially raised with a set of stairs attached to the facade. Porches may be open on two or three sides. And maybe either engage. My thought.
Wait, so she just switched the landings required and the set of stairs as potential? Versus how it was written here? It was the other way?
They wanted it potentially raised.
No, I didn't. But the set of stairs, I didn't understand what changed about it. Still not. Potentially.
The landing that is potentially raised.
That's, it already says that.
You, you accepted the orders change.
I, I didn't understand. Could you read it again?
Yeah, and what's the content difference between these two?
It didn't sound different.
I, I, I think as far as I can tell, the content is more or less the same. It's just a suggestion as to how to word it for presumably more clarity. For somebody who's.
But so the stairs. Could you read it again?
Yes, absolutely. Porch is a type of building entry. With a landing that is potentially raised. With a set of stairs attached to the facade.
So I guess I'm hearing that. Actually, so I'm hearing there that. The stairs are what would potentially be raising the landing. So it sounds like it is changing the meaning to not require a set of stairs.
What can you read in also John?
I, I have, I have a note from, from Rebecca. There was a suggested edit.
That, that would be a good suggestion. So that the land, you know, the porch doesn't necessarily have to be raised. Uh, the, the raised, the raised landing would cause accessibility issues. So, so shifting the wording, you know, so that it, the potentially raised and potential set of stairs becomes optional. The landing is not.
So I, I would like to suggest doing it by. Striking the set of stairs. So just make a read. Porch is a type of building entry with a potentially raised landing attached to the facade. I don't think.
I like that.
We don't, we don't need to say anything about stairs.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then it could be a ramp.
Sound fine? I think everybody pointed. Yes, good. Done. Okay. I have a story you could ask me about later. We won't go there. Alright, I am moving forward to page twenty-six. And we had accessory uses permitted. And, uh. I believe we were checked, we were asked to double check the wording on minimum thirty day rentals to make sure it was consistent.
I missed that, but sorry, this known as Rebecca's hand was raised.
Oh. Thank you. How about we put Rebecca up? Rebecca? Oh, I think you're up. Maybe. There we go.
Oh, hi, it's Rebecca. I've been trying to talk, but I guess I'm permanently muted or was.
What's up?
Um, nothing. I, I, I'd wanted to confirm what Linda said. She summarized my, my answers before with the unit. So the unit does not include the garage, but the floor area. The maximum floor area does. That was the same. And then for this potentially landing thing, um, the issue, you figured out the issue was that it made no sense to have, to require stairs when it, when it. The landing was not necessarily raised. So you've pretty much solved that except that a porch does include a landing and now you've made it a potentially raised landing, so. Um, it's not quite the same. It does require a landing, but.
Landing, which may be raised.
Which may be raised, exactly. And then now for this one.
I think that's what it means. If you say potentially raised landing, I mean it requires a landing and it might be.
I agree.
Okay, and then, um, this one for the accessory units, the accessory uses subsection C, I did confirm that, um. It, it contains what it's supposed to.
We were just asked to double check that in the subcommittee. We got that one. So that, that's in there correct. There was no change. That, that was page twenty-six and I'm just confirming, we said we would look at it. What we would, that is reflected here. Now, let's go to page twenty-seven. Um, there were two issues on that. Well, we've already been corrected. Well, actually, no, we owed a discussion of, there was, there was some discussion in the subcommittee in a request that we were confused about. What to say about, uh, gross in the very last part of the table. And after we discussed it, we ended up with eliminating the, the word gross ground level and just talked about max floor area. Alright.
So there's no change suggesting.
What's, what's here is what we, so we're boarding back on what we decided to do. We think this is correct.
Sorry, could we, I mean, I've been thinking about the unit size thing and.
Which unit size?
The, the line above that.
Okay.
Unit size, so, so we're changing it to just say unit size?
Yes.
I do think that leaves it unclear. Um, it feels like we should define unit size.
And say you mean excluding garage space?
Say that unit size excludes garage.
I like that too. I feel like we've gone around and around enough that.
That would seem to match with what Nicholas was thinking, right?
Right, yeah.
So you would say unit size.
Why, I don't know if we should do it in the table or add a definition of unit size in the front.
I understood that. I was trying to do it like on the fly now. I didn't know about going back and, and doing.
I'm, I'm fine. So you would do it as unit size excluding garage space?
Yes.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah. I think, and that means two tables, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so before we just struck it all together, but now we will say excludes garage space.
Yes.
That's not shared or just excludes garage space?
Just that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so back to gross. So, so we were asked to double check it. We, we, we looked at it and said, it's, this is what we, the new writing on both page twenty-seven and page thirty-nine. We have the different writing here that, that covers that. But we think we've got it covered there. Unless anybody has any comments. I'm not hearing any comments. There was also continued discussion that we said, what do we do about? Glen Oaks? Are we covered with Glen Oaks in terms of our footnote and? Wha- what could happen with the, the fact that it's a large, relatively large acreage, but not very buildable and how does it affect the ratios? And I believe there were some additional thought on that. Um, maybe, I think Catherine, you were trying to weigh in on that.
You're talking about page twenty-eight, line four nine, number one.
On page twenty-eight. And we went directly to what's in the housing element. And there was debate about whether to leave it or not leave it and we went all over the place on seventeen acres. And so the subcommittee, as John was just saying, decided to leave it and make it completely wholly consistent with housing.
Yes. Subsequent to that, there was also a thought on, from the lawyers on a way to potentially. Protect us a little bit more in that area. Right, so. I'm gonna, Catherine, if you could weigh in on what you thought about that.
Different from what we have on page twenty-eight.
Well, it, it wouldn't change what was on page twenty-eight is my understanding, but I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Catherine try to explain it.
Yeah, I am inclined to keep this footnote here on, uh, on page twenty-eight. Uh, you know, the Glen Oaks site is a, a challenging one because it is so large and yet so constrained. And, um, the housing element, I think, does a fine job of, of, um, setting forth. Um, those constraints. And at the same time, you know, providing a, a density range that would, um. You know, satisfy, um, the regulators and also allow the property owner to, um. Develop the site, um, as, as they're projecting. Uh, so, uh, you know, I think ultimately, I think, um, uh, this language works. Um, and really does to sort of sync up, um, the, the zoning code with the language in the housing element. Adrian, do you have anything? More to add, um, on this topic?
No, I think you've covered it. Thank you.
May I ask Catherine a question? Um, Catherine, the, um, table though says you can put four dwelling units per acre. What keeps a property owner from saying, okay, and I got seventeen acres, uh, I'm gonna put sixty-eight here?
Well, I think this footnote helps, helps with that, um, as does the diagram in the housing element, which. Uh, shows the developable, anticipated developable acreage. And, uh. Anticipates that that will be essentially what would be permitted there. So it's looking at four acres, uh, four developable acres and doing the math of, um. At a maximum of four dwelling units to the acre, um, four times four is sixteen units and that's the number of units that's in the, um. The housing element.
Okay, so you think the town could just push back and say, nope, here's our housing element. This is how we calculated it. It's sixteen.
Yeah. Now, I will say that the, you know, this is four point O acres, which sounds really precise, but, um. Uh, you know, as a practical matter, when the surveyor goes out there, it, it could be four point two, it could be three point nine. Uh, but, so I don't think we could push back so precisely with the four point O, um, but, uh, yes, this is, um, this. I believe this gives us a solid, you know, grounds to, um. Uh, to, to, you know, permit development as anticipated in the housing element and now in the zoning code.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
So we think we've got it covered here as the subcommittee was asked to, to check into and look into.
Catherine, I'm sure if you had a minute, you could see that we used the phrase estimated develop, developable area. Four point O, like you say, it could be three point eight, four point two. But we're covered with that language.
So the next area we were asked to double check on, or at least I noted, is we had the whole daylight plane discussion. So there are two elements in here. Um, page twenty-nine deals with it on the interior side, daylight plane. And we believe we've got the dimensions in there correctly and we ended up skipping the diagram. And that is. Also true. On page forty also. I think that's covered. If I go forward to page thirty-five. And we had a discussion about driveways. And the, the, the gist of it was. What we have here was around the general idea that we try to limit the number of driveways. That are accessing the main street and for the safety, traffic safety and pedestrian safety. The further request though was to check with fire marshal and see if they had any thoughts on that matter. So I did check in. With, uh, our fire marshal, Kim. And. Let me pull my notes up here. let me pull my notes up here. So um, I got back from from Kim, the um, the fire rigs around driveways. The slight differentiation in our terminology in that they think, they talk about driveways, but they also talk about a fire apparatus access road, which would generally would include a driveway. Um, but also, you know, they're trying to regulate all of the access getting into a property, which might include the public roads, everything else that's beyond just the driveway. A couple of notes. We head down, the driveways may not exceed twenty foot in width. Um, from her perspective, she says, well, twenty foot's the minimum, so. You know, she would think of it more of as a minimum. It doesn't actually hurt anything the way it's written, but but um, she thinks of it as a minimum. There are other situations where the fire access would need to be larger than that. Um, so for instance, one would be if you had a three-story building that required the extra ladder truck that we've discussed, that requires per fire code, a wider driveway. If if there's been a decision that there's a fire hydrant required on that driveway, it goes to twenty six feet. Uh, I think the ladder truck went to thirty four. As a whole, in general, they would prefer more access, accesses rather than less. But they don't actually kick in any regulations until you get to much larger, well, on a residential area. One or two family dwellings, it's when the number of units exceeds thirty that they need to fire access. So we're we are below that. So that's where the, so we also discussed, um, I said, you know, I wonder if we should add a text on there, and we had discussed this in the subcommittee meeting. Would we tack on to the end of our code that it is subject to preemption by the fire code? So I don't think we need to get into all of these fire access regulations, including that in our code, but a reference that things could be different.
And so that's in the version that we're looking at here, which says unless preempted by the fire.
Correct. So that's what we have on page thirty five, that kind of tried to take all of that into account.
Yeah, that's really good.
Well, you only have that for the number of driveways, but if I understood that there's an issue with the width, that sometimes it's required to be exceed twenty feet, which would contradict.
Well, then it would be preempted by the fire code is what we were trying to say.
But you don't have that note on three dot A.
But we do, we need to put it on three A and three B.
Oh, I see. That's a good point. I think the answer is yes.
To the chair, but it says parking lot access, parking lot access, so wouldn't you assume that parking lot plot access would be via a driveway? And so it's inclusive?
I'm talking, well. I'm talking about three dot A, driveways may not exceed twenty feet.
I understand what you're saying. I just mean, because the language is included in B, we're talking in reference to parking lot access. You can't access a parking lot without a driveway, so I'm just.
You've already covered it in other words.
That's what I'm saying, but it it doesn't hurt. It. Yeah, it, yeah, there's nothing wrong with being extra cautious and adding it if if the commission wishes.
Let's just put it in.
Well, I'm not necessarily sure from what you read, John, that we need to change the twenty feet in width. I mean, that's our presumption. She said that's her minimum. But I don't think in what you read, you talked about anything that she would say that would change that width.
If if that driveway was, yes, it would. If if the driveway was part of that designated access, then all of that applies to the driveway.
And you, I didn't catch it completely, but you said under some circumstances, it needs to be wider than twenty feet.
Oh, yeah, 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 several, two, at least two occasions, yeah. If you have to bring in one, if it's a three-story building that you're putting in place, and you have to bring in the larger ladder truck, it gets wider. And if you have to have a fire hydrant there, but they also control when you have fire hydrants, it might have to be wide.
Um, I mean, I guess I'll just comment that I still don't like the minimum, sorry, the maximum of one driveway, and it sounds like the fire department prefers more.
We voted on that last time and ended up with one.
We did. I, we got new information. I'm just noting that we have new information that the fire department.
It's not required by the fire department. Um, they always think more is better, and our pedestrian bicycle thinks less is better.
I don't mind adding, if you want, uh, on, I agree with Adrian, I think it's superfluous, but if you want to add driveways may not exceed twenty feet in width unless specifically required by the fire code.
But just use the same wording, unless preempted by Barker. Why would you say it differently?
Because you're 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 talking about a specific set of circumstances, whereas in the other one, I'm not sure.
I like using the same language.
Same language. Page forty. And we are looking at note number three underneath the table. And I believe in the discussion, we had decided to make it just units in general. Um, even though that's a little different than the the housing element, because we thought that was the intent of the discussion with, between everybody.
Sorry, which page?
Page forty. And it's note number three. So I think it just becomes units.
Correct.
And skip, delete housing.
Right.
That, every, that, that is everything that I have that included the subcommittee and any of the things that people have. I hesitate to ask. But does any, do any have to have some other piece in there?
One word change that the subcommittee didn't do, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
It's in the affiliated housing section. I had, I had wanted to make it more based on locally based institutions and.
So we're on page, we're on page forty eight.
Page forty eight. And I was outvoted on that, but in D, we also deleted the to live and work in town, and I think without the change I wanted to make, I think we should reintroduce the word, the words and work. So I think with with it being institutions and employers, I had tried to say Portola Valley based, and I was outvoted. And so this is a change that came from when I had that change in there. So in D, I think we should add back in to live and work. Just, that was part of the change that I had made.
Anybody have any objections?
What I'm trying to say.
Nobody have any objections, I think.
The idea of the affiliated housing is just that, for people to live and work in town.
Is, Stanford isn't affiliated housing partners ever?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, in that case, it's not necessarily to encourage people to work in town.
I know, maybe it is.
Change the um, and to an or. And that would scoop it in.
I would like it to be and.
It could be and slash or.
There you go.
I I think it seems fine. I mean, just I'm not missing something. I mean, this is the purpose and intent, but there may be affiliated housing partners that.
I don't think it's excluding.
Not, yeah, it's not excluding.
I don't think it's excluding anybody the way I read it. So it's live and work. We put that back and work back. Okay.
To the chair, I I just had a quick comment come in that um, those listening online cannot hear Commissioners Targ, Krasinski and Brothers, as well as Kopso and Golden.
Sorry.
So if you could, if you'd bring your mics a little bit closer, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we're done with this. I would entertain a motion to pass this along to the town council. With the, with the changes that we have included.
We've made tonight.
Could we have a little more discussion? For me, there's still things I feel uncomfortable about. But if they got on, high on the list, very high on the list of um, next items, it would make it easier for me to be in favor or
Right.
not of this.
Right.
Um, I think.
I'm switching things.
Yeah, okay. I'm really pleased with the Glen Oak statement that was keeping me awake. And now the last thing is the Ladera Church. I think we've all felt that we were between a rock and a hard place. We felt pressure to take the housing element, which we designed and did work on a year and a half ago, but now the world's changed. And it, many pieces of it feel outdated, but we're still under pressure. Um, on the Ladera Church one, I do wish there was a path that was a little more straight forward, rather than relying on the um, density bonus things, which frankly are super complicated for even somebody on the planning commission that hears um, you know, details about it over and over. It's still hard to figure out. So I feel like asking them to rely on that path is, oof, just feels so onerous. I would love to um, investigate, let me call it, this affordable housing overlay. And if we put that like on some kind of path for ourselves, or um, you know, we need staff help is um, an issue. But put it really high on the list, it would help me to vote, I feel, I think we are all trying to thread a needle. It would help me to feel better about this needle that we're trying to, trying to thread or pass.
So so I was gonna say, I do have kind of a proposal along those lines. Maybe we discuss that first and then deal with resolutions? If that worked for people?
I would love that. It would just make me, yeah, make it easier for me or feel better about stuff.
Okay. Yes, looks like I didn't get any.
I guess I I I I understand and sympathize with Ann's point. And I'm happy to see it, the Ladera Church go onto the higher priority list of things to follow up on. I I am troubled by the fact that we've beat this code to death here, and that issue didn't even arise to us until we were partway through the process. So I hate to think in terms of I'm gonna say, under, under, undermining, that's not quite the right word, but impugning the code that we've spent so much time putting on. So if something outside of the code would satisfy your concerns, I'd I'd be really happy. I feel very much like John has done an amazing job, as has uh, the ASCC of going through every single one of these details, and it's it's complex and uh, I hate to see us add more to it at this point, especially with the housing element issues hanging over us.
So you're agreeing with me that if we could put it on a list that's high priority after we pass this resolution, that would be.
Agreed, a a contingent on passing this resolution to get this done. Yeah. Part and parcel. Yeah.
You guys wanna talk more? Do you want to approve, do a resolution for this code that we've done?
I'm happy to go with the resolution. I just want to make clear that I'm not wedded to any particular language within the with the ancillary document that follows. I understand the issue with respect to Ladera Church. I think that I, it makes sense to to flag it. I'm pretty sure that I wouldn't want to call out any specific path uh, in that document whatsoever. But lagging it in is obviously an issue of community concern.
Okay, then I'll go.
With with that, uh, I would be happy to make a resi, I would be happy to uh, move uh, the item, and of course, I've just uh.
I delay team zoning?
The twenty twenty four dash two. I I I appreciate the assistance from my able brother. And I I.
I second that with the changes that we enumerated just um, in the last half hour.
But through a roll call vote?
Vice Chair Targ?
Aye.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopso?
Aye.
Chair Golden?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Do we want a break? We're gonna go to the next, right away to the next discussion, or do people need a short break? They've got minutes.
I say we go on and then take a break at
Okay.
like our usual time of nine or nine thirty.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Um, so. We had a list, so one of the discussions we, tasks we gave to the subcommittee was we were having a lot of discussion about bringing up things that of varying potential, you know, degrees of amount of work and ideas about what should be done. Um, so we said we'd keep a list. Um, so I have compiled that that list. And tried to group it in some fashion, um, which is what you saw on this list for prior consideration. Some of the things I'd like to discuss are our objectives and our purposes in doing that. We didn't really talk about that. Uh, priorities and urgency, uh, and any recommendations. One of the things I noted, as I've been getting lots of communication on this, is that um, I started to see a different grouping. About, or at least a different, potentially different grouping and priority. And and I think it coalesced when we actually got the note from Tim on the, you know, could he do something with supportive housing? Could he do something with affordable housing? And I think at the top level, what I was beginning to see was that we've been very focused on making sure we get through HCD and meet what is required by the housing element, like at the state level. We have been less focused on what do we do to actually achieve that? And how do we make this work for the various potential developers that we have? And I think things like suggestion for, um, you know, in the ASCC, it came up about this desire for simplified housing code. We have a code that deals with potentially very large developments that we're not even sure we would ever see in Portola Valley, but maybe there's a simpler set somewhere. In general, people are thinking, gosh, we ought to be able to do something with modular housing. But that, how do, how do we make that work? Uh, we have, as as another example would be discussions of grading. We have very objective grading standards, but the numbers were developed for single-family homes versus multi-family home. Um, so there's, so in my mind, um, and and without saying any one of those is the right answer. I'm always thinking what we need to recommend is what that we would prioritize. Um, facilitating, what would I call it? The, both the design and process for supportive and affordable housing. And go through some, have a group that actually looks at some of those suggestions and tries to figure out what could we do that that really does work in the more limited situations. Um, and whether or not that becomes zoning code or a program at the town level, or or even housing element changes, um, I don't know off the top of my head.
Sorry, say the beginning of that again, that we should have a.
Which part?
No, sorry, just that last sentence. You were, a group, or what it, like, what do you?
Well, I'm assuming we just do a sub, I mean, bottom line is that it gets us, I'm suggesting that we recommend the town council that we think this is a priority for the house, for the town to move forward. And that we would think it would make sense for the council to prioritize it and town, town staff to prioritize it. And that my likely suggestion on how to, if if that were to happen, would be to proceed as, probably do another subcommittees of the ASCC and 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 people here, to at least get the ball rolling on that.
I'm sorry, and can you restate what the?
I'm sorry. And can you restate what the, it is?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is where I need help, by the way. Um, I thought it was about prioritizing design and process simplification in order to support our supportive and affordable housing developments. And I gave you specific examples as I was, I'd been hearing that I think fall into that category, but I'm that's kind of what I, that's where I think our disconnect may be in terms of what have we been working on so far, which is and what would be useful for actually getting some of that housing developed. What?
Mr. Chairman, I see affordability here already as number four. Here, what you're saying, which seems to diverge a bit from the, the version of the
It does diverge.
future priority issues. So I guess, you know, without jumping in feet first to the affordability, I guess the whole point is what's the goal of this? This activity of the list of things to follow up on really related initially to things in the zoning code that we were not touching because they weren't necessary to touch as part of the housing. So to me, while that might be a more, I don't know, ministerial, a more paperwork exercise, that seems to me to still be a really important element. But then you're talking about something new, which is the supportability down here in number four. And I don't agree or disagree, but I guess I'm trying to figure out how this all fits into this memo. And, um, and whether or not what you're talking about now supersedes the objective standards discretionary review that fits in.
So, so it's related, but it was just a different grouping. In my mind, again, I mean, I'm getting lots of input post having written this, um, because we, this is the first time we've started to even try to talk about it. But, you know, a, a process thing, right, is, you know, one of the things we've done is we've pointed to other parts of our code that are both subjective and objective. And we've said, oh, well, that's totally legal because those were all written historically. Um, it sure makes it difficult for somebody to try to figure out, am, am I gonna be approved or not? Or am I subjective or objective? And are we gonna somehow partition it? And, and if we were really focused on, in my mind, again, I'm not saying we have to do this, but in my mind, we'd separate them out and say it's very clear what you do to be objective um on these other areas um, and, and roll it all in.
I mean, I, I I guess, I guess I'm at a loss as just how much time and energy we wanna spend on talking about this, because it's so different from where I started with this memo. Not that I disagree with it, but sort of how we frame it going forward to put it in a fashion that we can figure out how to address it. Like Nicholas is asking, did you mean to put together a group or, or not? And um, to me, there's a part of this that's pretty simple, which is the things in the code that are beyond the housing element that we've discovered that need to be fixed. And that, that, like I say, it's pretty, pretty simple and could be pulled out. These hard, these others are, are much more difficult and go beyond just the code itself, which is fine, but they're, they're apples and oranges, you know, to my thinking, so.
But for me, um, this resolution that we just passed, I do wanna take this and now go up a higher level. I feel like we passed these laws and we had one property owner, but also a second one saying this is completely irrelevant to what the project they wanna do. But we kept saying, well, thank you, but we're, we're stuck on this other path. I wanna fix that. I mean, I just hate it that we're passing stuff that we felt like we needed to, but it's not very practical. So I wanna make that higher. Then I agree, we found a lot of zoning things like, oh, nice to change, nice to change. Those are lower to me than really addressing the housing, even the housing element and zoning that more matches something rational with what people wanna do now.
So you're talking about specific information that we've obtained about specific properties, not the more generic topic of how do we increase affordability? I mean, I'm just trying to put some categories here so I can understand. And I, I would agree with you, actually. I think that would be my second priority. Then I think my, my lower priority would be these more what's the right word? Things like new topics, like affordability, objectivity. So that's a category that wasn't even on our draft paper and the category that you raised. Not to say that it shouldn't be included, but it wasn't in the draft.
I agree. Right. But now I want it inserted up higher. Yeah.
So I can imagine having an item that staff should work with affordable housing property owners who are interested in developing their land for affordable housing purposes. I don't believe, for example, that the Ladera Church site is is as intractable a site to develop under existing law uh as um a, as, as some may believe. And I think that there's some amount of coaching, which would be very inappropriate for me to discuss for any number of reasons. But it's something that staff or staff in conjunction with an appropriate land use council representing a property owner uh could explore in a very fruitful manner. And I can imagine prioritizing that and out of that conversation may come a request for us to do something. But it's not incorrect that it's complicated to do a significant development period. And it's even more so challenging to do so within the town of Portola Valley for a variety of reasons. And if a person is looking at our code saying, and they challenge site, saying, jeez, I'm in a challenged location right now, and my plans have changed from what I proposed initially. I need some help in figuring out how to develop my property. The answer is, that's right. And I think that we can be open to that conversation and we can prioritize that. But I'm not interested in seeing a change in our code prior to that kind of conversation taking place.
Were you thinking we were proposing a change in the code?
Yeah.
I was proposing taking a look at it. I was proposing, I was proposing that we needed to investigate it.
Process that would lead to.
I'm, I'm not interested in our looking at that. I'm interested in the town staff working with a property developer, which is something that happens all the time. Any development, even with the single family project, you spend a lot of time speaking with Adrian. Certainly. And uh, to, to work out what you can and can't do on your property and consulting with uh, a person who's done this a bunch of times. Uh, the housing laws have gotten to be much more complicated in the last four or five years. And there are all sorts of people who are thoughtful and skilled in this kind of work.
But we know that we've got things in the, in the code now that are causing an issue. And you're saying you don't wanna, and that's gonna end up coming to us.
And I, and I'm saying, I'm not sure that that's actually true. I think I think that that may be true. I'm not convinced that that is, that there's, I'm not convinced that there's a problem and I'm definitely and I'm pretty sure that it's not an intractable problem if there is a problem.
It'd be great if you tell me what the path is for that. Like if they submitted a plan that had five units on it, what, what would happen?
It depends on the path that they chose to, to move in. That's, you don't submit a, you wouldn't send, first the one wouldn't have to say, are you going to subdivide your property? And that would be a good question. Or are you going to do your project as a single parcel with a cluster, what, cluster of cottages?
Yeah, let's say single parcel cluster of cottages.
Yeah. So I mean, then one would looks like, what is, what is your one would could look to downzone the property. One could using SB one six six. One could look at the use of SB four. One could look at any number of affordable housing concessions or waivers. And that's a conversation that you would have with staff before you submit an application. If you submitted an application without having talked to staff, the application almost certainly would be rejected. Or it's like, that's very interesting. Why don't you try again? But nobody would ever do that.
Talk to me about downzoning. That seems simple and straightforward.
I don't wanna have a conversation about a specific project. That's not, that's that, that is my job, but that's not my job here. And it is staff's job to have that kind of conversation, or it's somebody else's job who does that to have that conversation with the potential applicant.
So let me just, but, so you don't think there's anything that we should be recommending to the town council?
I think we should recommend that the town staff encourage uh applicants who are interested in affordable housing to meet with staff, confer with staff, and staff, if need be, can one devote time, and perhaps they should devote time uh without charging it to the applicant. And we could do something like that. And uh, if modifications are, are in fact required, then that could come back to this or some other appropriate body. But it is way premature to discuss any kind of modification to, uh, to the code that we've just adopted, well, we've just recommended for adoption. And I, I don't, I don't see, have no reason to believe that there's any amendment that's necessary to it to accomplish uh that particular project. Whether there are other projects that would need the code to be amended, uh, I, I, I don't know, but.
Ronnie, you've been trying to get, you've been trying to get in.
I wanna make one comment to the session.
Yeah.
I just wanted to call attention that we do have in our housing element, program four dash three, which is to ensure the permitting process for modular and manufactured homes is clear and does not include any disincentives to using these building methods. And it goes on to say, evaluate existing zoning code language and building permit process and make any necessary modifications. And so that's something that we have already committed to doing. It's not immediate. I believe the dates are twenty twenty seven. But we have that, uh, which I think overlaps with part of what you were suggesting.
It does, yeah, yeah.
I, um you know, talking about particular properties, I don't wanna do that. I've never wanted to do that in this meeting, but I do know, and I looked pretty carefully while we were operating as a subcommittee, that between uh the consultants and the people on the ASCC, we have modeled every one of these sites. And the sites can produce what the housing element asks them for under the code that we have passed today. Now, that might be contrary to comments we're getting from the public, which may or may not understand all the intricacies of uh, uh, of the code and of, of development. And uh, we hear from people at a lot of different levels and how many people have actually gone to the very detailed levels of putting a proposal together. So um, I definitely am not interested in taking on a whole new topic related to the code. Unless it's this subset of things that we've already uh discovered in the code that really need to be updated. I mean, I think the Frog Pond is an obvious example, but there are others as well that we have come across that just the housing, the housing, the, the zoning code is not consistent with what has been decisions that have been made by the town council. So I, 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 beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm, I'm a little at a loss here because I had a memo from you and now we're talking all over the, the, all over the, the range. And I'm not adverse to doing this, but it's not a high priority for me, especially when I don't have anything in writing. It means we think about it or prepare for it. And I'm, I'm, I'm since to Ann's comment, but I, but I also um wanna make sure there's something there there before we spend a lot of time on it.
Um, this is maybe a philosophical discussion, but let me say it. I really, I feel like a planning commission at this town, but all towns, has um, just regular citizens that come and apply, uh, not necessarily with legal housing background. And I think that's a huge benefit. I really make sure that when I read these things, like a regular person can read it, right? And I feel like we have an obligation to the public that when they open things up and it says, oh, this site can be developed for twenty seven units per acre. They can do the math. They can see it. It's gotta be fifty feet back. It's gotta be twenty feet from the side. It's all readable, like a normal person could come and just kind of figure out what can be done. Okay, of course, there's always some legal issues and clever architects and stuff. But I am super uncomfortable with a solution that relies on yeah, go talk to attorneys and, uh, you know, see what they say, and there's this way and that way. I feel like people need to explain it to me. I need to understand it. I wanna know what that path is. You know, I'm fine if maybe the next step is, okay. The applicants talk to staff and it's, you know, there's some straightforward thing, but I'm kind of bummed that didn't come up in all these meetings, like if there was a path that was easily explainable. I feel like there's some convoluted paths, the using the density bonus and, you know, I would like us to come up with a a simpler path, one that I understand and just is right there in writing.
I mean, there's simple paths to, to development that's consistent with, for example, the densities specified in the housing element. And there's not simple paths for doing something different, but those paths are more complicated. And if you want the simple path you're talking about, we would have to change the housing. It, it to, if, if you're talking about, you know, enabling lower density development.
Or you would need to decide that you're not gonna, that you're going to chop down three heritage trees. And there's, there are things that you can do to do the project. You just have to make choices about what it is you're going to do. So if you're going to decide, I don't want to do specifically or exactly what's being called out here, then that, then things get harder. There's, there are clear paths. But if you say, but I don't wanna take those clear paths, and it's like, fine. You don't need to take those clear paths. You can do something else.
But we couldn't do like the affordable overlay that then changes the number. I agree, that gives us a no net loss problem later. But, you know, we've got a no net loss problem on some other uh properties also, so it gets lumped into a you know, gotta make sure our buffer can account for it, or there's other sites get found.
I have to say, I think we have three folks that aren't interested in trying to do some other resolution.
There, there are three folks who are interested in working with, and having the town work with a particular applicant to help that applicant achieve everybody's goal of creating housing.
You're not interested in, in us trying to provide direction for the town council in this area?
Other than saying to town council, this is, Ladera Church is a, is a valued uh, member of our community. We seek to support the Ladera Church in achieving our common goals. Uh, and recommend making staff available to discuss uh options that uh can produce affordable housing while preserving the character of the uh, cherished rural community. How's that?
Well, I totally agree. Obviously, I agree with that. There's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that.
I mean, that's the right place to start. The right place to start is having a conversation with the town about what you can do. The wrong thing to do in my mind is to say, we're going to create a new mechanism that obviates the need to follow the code that we've just established. I, I don't, I don't see.
But that wasn't what I was saying. What I, what I'm saying is, is that there are, there are additional pieces here that within our existing code that we should, if we really are interested in trying to facilitate housing, if we are interested in really trying to say, there is validity, validity in ministerial paths to make it simpler to achieve this for any particular property, then we already know some of the things that would need to change and that I, we should be investigating them and trying to figure out, does that really work? So it's really more about investigating, but it's, but you know, it's okay.
I think that there is an element here about streamlining that's already in the memo that you put together. I thought that the discussion was talking about putting some affordable housing overlay, which is, you know, interesting, but really different from what we've just done. And in my mind, wholly premature until the nature of this, uh, that project has, uh, has been explored in a way that it hasn't been.
I guess I, it's, I guess I'm feeling a different level, an additional level or maybe different also of skepticism, which is, uh, what we're talking about, building houses is very specific, very specific. Properties, sites, units, numbers of units. And to have this discussion and think that we can affect it with, uh, language and words at a different level, to me is, well, it's antithetical to what you learn about as a lawyer. I don't know what you learn about as a doctor or an engineer, but you solve the problem that's on your plate. Uh, and, and so to me, it's really hard to, to have this concept in the abstract, even as to Ladera in the abstract, because I know in the back of my mind that I've already seen the modeling that shows it can be done. So bring the modeling out and talk to the model, uh, take the modeling and go to talk to the staff. So to somehow or other think that I'm going to solve a problem, what I'm going to call more, more on the clouds, more with the right, more, more of the language that says, we really want to encourage this, yeah, we're going to do this, yeah, we're going to, you know, we're going to get up every Saturday morning and face each, whatever it is that we're going to say is, is at a more general level that may or may not work in that situation and then most likely won't work in the next situation. So that's, I guess, the problem I'm really having with this conversation is how you take these generic sort of high-level thoughts and, and, and move them into something. And I'm especially having it because, because it, it's not something that, you know, was presented to me and preparing for the meeting and, and it just feels like it's really kind of out and left for you, sorry.
That's okay. We, we can agree to this. I, I think overall, we still tend to mostly agree on this stuff. It's just like, how do you move it forward? I had a proposal and it doesn't seem like, well, could you feel like that's a good way to move? So do you want to do the general discussion? Oh, because then we would still have this list. And I had proposed that we talk about objectives and focusing what we want to accomplish with it. And I think we had some thoughts on that. Is that worthwhile? Are you still interested in that? I mean, that was a request that I thought came from the entire planning commission for the subcommittee. Is that a useful process or is it, you know?
Well, I'm repeating myself. I, I think the initial part that was of interest to me were the specific parts of the code that we were coming across that we were not addressing now because they were not having to do with the housing element and that was our highest priority. So that's really a category of, of fairly relatively precise wording things. And maybe you could expand that a little bit to figure out what's objective and subjective. But to me, that was a category, uh, that is covered in here and is definitely worth proceeding. I don't know what the next step is, but I, but I do feel strongly that it's important not to, not to let that fall by the wayside. As to new issues, which I guess some of these issues are, I, I don't feel so strongly personally.
Other thoughts?
Discussion? What is your question? Is your question if we should have a conversation about what should be done with this list?
Yeah, yeah, because we asked for it. So it was, so we provide, we sort of, we've done a kind of a first pass here. The ideas normally that we then do up, what is the larger council thing? Does the commission think, what does the, um, does it meet the needs? Should we try to do something with it? Is some of it superfluous? Because we were just, we were just keeping notes as we went through it. What would people like to do?
I mean, yeah, I think, I don't, I don't, and this would, maybe you're saying we could talk about, but I don't know what we're going to do with this. If we're going to, I, I am not at all anywhere close to being able to go for this list and send it to the town council. I don't think it's helpful for them. I think it's too long to, to be something that's useful for them. And a bunch of stuff on this list, maybe I don't understand or I don't agree with. On the other hand, if I'm okay with this being a list and we move on and we're not doing anything with it. I, we don't need to have a big discussion about what's in the list if, if we're not like. Yeah, I mean, the, the list is here, okay, it's a list. I mean, it's, it's, so it's not clear to me what is being posed, I guess, to do with this list. And if, if it's not to do anything with it, then we don't need a, a lot of discussion about it.
You don't even want to fix the parts of the code that we've already found.
Well, there's a lot of things that you're saying are obvious that I don't agree are obvious. And I, and I think we would have to go through and discuss. Like you keep saying that Frog Pond is obvious and I don't think it's at all.
Nick, do you have any good ideas?
The only thing that I feel as though that I've committed to do is to make the recommendation to council to work with the Derrit Church. And that was something that I said today, and I'd be happy to do that. I think that there, we could broaden it out to the other affordable housing. The other landowners who have expressed interest and concern about developing affordable housing within the town. And I think we could, for example, Stanford, uh, just submitted a letter expressing pretty strong concerns about Glen Elks. Just as an observation, it would have been great if that had come out a couple of months ago. But having seen that, you got to take note that there are at least three applicants or potential, or three landowners who have expressed interest in developing affordable housing or these multifamily housing, who are expressing concern. Seems appropriate that the county take note of that and agree to work with them at some point to address Stanford's concerns and discuss, uh, potential issues or opportunities that may exist. So that's one item. Second item is with respect to this list. My understanding was that we would be submitting this list or some variant of this list to, uh, uh, to the town, probably this evening. Probably not on a five-year vote. For the town's consideration, excuse me, the council's consideration as being priorities. As there have been a number of issues that have come up. We both, uh, express strong opinions, both on this field and on the community. And, uh, giving those to the council for the council's, uh, decision whether further action should be taken on. That seems like an appropriate thing to do. Whether that happens this evening or we declare victory, send an epistle saying, council, please direct town staff to talk to potential property owners and revisit this list at our next meeting is, is, is something that I'm certainly open to. So if any, that's a good idea.
Well, I certainly thought of the whole list. I actually wasn't expecting to, to do something with the whole list tonight. I thought it needed more input and refinement and discussion, um, on that. And, and the ASC hasn't had a chance to look at it either. So, um, I, I wouldn't propose doing the whole list tonight. I'm just trying to figure out what can we do? And I liked some of your suggestions on, how do we? We, we certainly, I think we all have strong opinions on one of, trying to figure out how do we move forward with the folks that are actually dealing with development? So is there something we can? How did, the, the particular words that Nick was doing are, do they resonate with other people? Could we just say something along those lines or is, do people not feel good about that?
I don't feel a sense of urgency. I mean, we have a code that we've now passed that'll get approved by the town council in a month. And, you know, then we want to get the housing element back in place. Then I think in due course, people will digest these things and, um, go forward. I don't, don't particularly feel an urgency to tell everybody they should work with these people because they should work with these people anyway. I feel like that's the job that people are doing, so. I'll be open if you want to revisit this list, but it sounds like there's all sorts of issues with it. So I wouldn't know where to go with it.
So we're not doing anything with it tonight with what's going on.
I could be fine with that. And we just know that, um, to really get housing built, we're going to have to do some more jiggering, but we figure that out a little later.
Okay, I'm suggesting we move on to the minute.
Sounds good.
Could, could I, this is Rebecca Flynn from the ASCC. Could I, to the chair, make a comment?
Yes, you could, please do.
So I just want to remind all the commissioners that the ASCC did meet to review all of this zoning, all the zoning amendments. And, um, one of our recommendations was to provide an alternate path for this, for the objective design standards portion. Included the facade articulation and the building entrances and some of the other, um, paint colors, et cetera, requirements. And we made the recommendation that there should be a simplified path included, um, in the zoning amendments. That many, many of these requirements are designed really for a cityscape, suburban cityscape like on Menlo Park or, you know, where, where you have a bunch of multifamily houses or townhouses up against a, a sidewalk. And we don't have that in Portola Valley. Um, with our setbacks, we'll probably never have something similar. So we felt that it was important to have a streamlined version of those objective design standards. I mean, the entry requirements are, are ridiculous when you, when you're thinking about a simple one-story or even simple two-story buildings. So we were essentially led or almost promised by the planning commission that we should set those particular things aside right now because we're in a rush to get this through so that we can get our housing element recertified. That's what we were kind of pre- promised, led to believe that we would set this aside and we would revisit it after we get our housing, um, element recertified. So here we are, I'm hearing that, no, we're, it's all done, we're not going to look at it again. So I'm a little concerned about that because, um, my feeling is that the ASCC should be going through this, the zoning amendments that you've just passed and coming up with the, the exact objective design guidelines section that, that, that is thought, is better thought through, uh, for Portola Valley and for providing a simple pathway for affordable housing. You know, you're not going to have an affordable housing with a, you know, a 12-foot porch and a, a seven-foot overhang. I mean, those are just, they don't work from an affordable standpoint. So my personal recommendation is that the planning commission say to the town council that, um, that these sort of, this, um, for the objective design guidelines, that the ASC should be looking at that. In this memo that John put together, that was based on all the comments that we gave him from the subcommittee. There's a whole bunch of things in there that are, that are related to that streamlining. But there's also a whole bunch of things in there related to a much larger effort, which would involve rationalizing and cleaning up the entire zoning code, which is not something that needs to be done in the short term. But the idea of streamlining and cleaning up and simplifying and providing a simplified pathway for the objective design guidelines is a more urgent thing. I'm urgent, I'm thinking in terms of late summer, this fall. So in order to, you know, I don't know that the planning commission has to make a, a ruling on that and make a recommendation to the town council, but certainly the town council would need to make a recommendation, that they put some funding and planning support for the, for the ASCC is my recommendation, to embark on cleaning that, that, and providing that streamlined objective design guidelines. Because I feel like they definitely still need, need something.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rebecca, is that, if I may, is that embodied in item one and two collectively?
Item one is not, is not, that's another more complex thing. That was just to, and give applicants the option to, um, have, have more things on their property if they were willing to go through the ASC. That, that's a separate thing, again, that's a more long-term thing. Uh, it would be under number two, objective standards, some of them. Some of these objective standards are, some of the stuff that's written in here is definitely a more long-term sort of thing, you know, rethi-, you know.
Also in number three.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a mixture. I did not.
Yeah.
I guess, what I'm looking for, Rebecca, is, uh, I know that what, what you suggested is, is an issue that we've discussed and that we suggested that we table for this particular process. Do you see your recommendation embodied in the memo that, that you've got before you?
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, it's not quite written that way, but certainly under number two, objective standards, the idea was to simplify.
I think it would need to be rewritten to, to, along those lines if, if.
Yeah, certainly to C is certainly, that's the key right there.
So it sounds like there's some tailoring that needs to be done.
Well, if, if that's the objective people would like to go for, which is kind of what I was trying to get out of people, that I'm happy to do that.
And do we need to do it or the ASCC can write that and then have their discussion with the town council about what their priorities are?
Yeah, I don't see why we have to do it, uh, the ASCC could do it. Or at least bring it to us.
Yeah, if, if.
Well, it sounds, sounds like we should try to off, I mean, I don't know that we need to solve that here. We should, it sounds like there's some interest in doing something, but we would need to reframe it and be a lot more clear about it. It's certainly what Linda's telling me.
Well, if Chair Warr is still in the building, then he could, um, provide his input on whether he felt the ASC should move forward. Oh, okay. Also, I certainly support that. I know, I know Carter does as well. I can't speak for everybody, but certainly I, I served on two subcommittees when I worked on this project. And between the three of us, you know, there was certainly a, a desire to simplify those objective design guidelines. And in fact, we, we submitted an, an aversion, um, that we were then told, no, we're going to hold off on that because we're, it's too urgent to get this through. So, like, you know, I think there's definitely a desire on the part of the ACC to reexamine some of those guidelines.
Let, let, let me, let me try to, as chairman, try to take up another stab at trying to heat this up. I'm not quite sure how, but you gave me some feedback to work with, you gave me lots of feedback. So I'm going to go, go back to. So I'm going to go back to, thank you, Rebecca. I'm going to go back to the minutes, and we'll have a discussion. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
So what's the disposition of the memorandum that was agendized to?
Well, I think nobody wants to take any action on it tonight. It needs to be, I think the information given is it would have to be reformulated, potentially on the lines of short-term and long-term discussions, and that that might be a good fodder for additional discussion.
So are we moving forward in that direction? As we were, you've got, you've got something teed up, talked about some options.
Okay.
We have a, it sounds like there is some remaining interest in doing, making a recommendation to, to council. You want to operationalize, suggest how you might operationalize.
Well, it's not, not something we would put a motion on, right? I mean, we just, it's a matter of, yes, I would like to operationalize it. How would you suggest?
I think if, if I were going to do this, I would probably have another subcommittee so that we tee it up to this body, potentially including a member of the ASCC. So we can move forward with some alignment, or at least understanding what's ours, what's theirs, what's the planning commission, and what's ours collectively, and then come back with a recommendation to the body. But, you know, we're nicely teed up.
So what do folks think? Would you like to do that? Nicholas has a proposal.
What's the question? Like if, well, what?
So should we, should we attempt to put together another subcommittee to follow along the lines that we talked about, sort of reformulating it in terms of the areas that people seem to like, thinking about ASCC versus PC versus collective, that type of thing?
I don't understand the scope of that, or like, what? I guess I don't understand, but that would be.
So.
A memo that we have right now and reformulate it based on the discussion that we've had and the observation that Rebecca made, and see if there's a way to reformulate that and bring it back to us for some more focused discussion and some potential action, I think. Isn't that what you were saying, Nicholas, in having a subcommittee do it?
So either this is a subcommittee or it's a dear colleagues, and, and it's one, or else, or else we can it all together and say this is too hard.
Or we say it's the ASCC's purview, and they have a lot of input and energy around it. Maybe they should make a stab at what the changes should be, and if they need more resources or advice from us, they ask for it.
They can do it. They can send it to the town council, they can send it to us at their prerogative.
I'd stay.
You'd stay? Neither one of those sounds like a good idea.
I mean, I guess to me, yeah, and I guess what I, my concern is having, directing a subcommittee to go off and spend time and create another list that, of priorities, but meanwhile, we haven't actually really had a wholesome, wholesome discussion on what we all feel that priorities should be. So, yeah, I didn't, I mean, here we had a subcommittee go and create this list, but I'm not, I'm not sure that having another subcommittee go and create a new list is going to result in.
Rather just have another discussion on it? Or continue discussing?
I'm happy with letting it go, and if the ASCC wants to take it up and come up with a proposal for the town council or for us, that seems like a good route to me. Otherwise, maybe it's agendas in one of our meetings to, I don't know, have a discussion of what we want this to be. I mean, that's kind of what we're doing now, so. I was okay when we were moving on.
So if I had to say, well, I think I'm hearing from people, it's like, turn it back to the ASCC and see what happens.
No, I mean, that's not what you're hearing from me. There are certain items that have come up throughout that we've heard from members of the community, we've heard from us, that are in-hand, kind of fixes that we think ought to, some of us think ought to be addressed. And the view that, at least I had going into this, that there were going to be some kind of concrete items that were going to be focused on, and maybe a couple of broader issues, such as the streamlined path that we would, that we discussed and we decided that we were going to defer, that we would recommend to council. So there have been other members of this body who have consistently thought that was a bad idea, and that's cool, too. But if we're going to decide that this is an ASCC issue, then, and punt ourselves, that's an important issue to, to decide that that's what we're going to do and to articulate it. And, yeah, there are a handful of things that one can do in response, but I'm kind of not interested in letting this go into that long good night without a, without a discussion of what it is that we're going to be doing. So my suggestion would be to identify a handful of items here that we want to put forward that are pretty concrete, to, that are within our wheelhouse that we have discussed, and put it forward in a letter to, or other chance middle to council. And council can do what they want to do with it. But I'm not interested in letting it go or sending it to a different body. And either we can have a wholesome discussion of that, or we can put together a subcommittee and identify what those items are and tee it up in a different form.
So is, so two options, right, are the subcommittee or a colleague memo? You know, what's the, the?
Or not, or else work from your list, like, like we teed it up in the agenda, right?
But you want to do that now?
No, right now, I wanted, right now, I wanted to decide what we're going to do and then get to the minutes.
Okay, so we're back to, so we're back to, what are the objectives and purpose that we're trying to achieve here?
So are you proposing a subcommittee, or are you just laying out options?
I'm laying out options. I'd like to, I'd like to decide. I think that we could do it in different ways, and I'm happy to work from John's list here. I mean, I think we can do, I don't much care, I'm happy to do what this group wants to do.
So that, that would look like this list gets agendized in a, in a future meeting?
That would be, that would be a way of doing it.
Sounds like it would work, though, before we do that.
Yeah.
To me, I mean, I already heard people giving feedback, which is what I was trying to get, and so, so I think we need to work on it before we tee it up again.
Yeah, agreed, I agree. And I mean, I think if you want to make a subcommittee, that, that's a good way to do it, with or without the ASCC, and just put this in a forum that we can actually, you know, talk to specifically with priorities and stuff. And John did a great job of keeping everything, but necessarily, it's kind of like baking a cake, you know, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. But, so I'd be, I'd be in favor if somebody wants to do that, take it to the next step.
I'm certainly happy to work on it. At the same time, maybe it's better for fresh odds to look at, just sort of put it in a different, you know, put it in your own view or change it. So do we have any volunteers for a subcommittee? I have no volunteers for a subcommittee, but some would, people like me to do a colleague memo. I think I can do that independently, right? Or, I want to take it on as a colleague memo then. That doesn't move the motion, does it?
No, I don't think so.
Why don't you do it? I'm looking at Linda and saying, I think that she has decided opinions, and I'm excited to hear.
I've spent a lot of time on these rules and a lot of things.
Excited to hear about what she has to recommend.
And I've got some other, because I'm drafting for this town, so, no, thank you. And I think, you know, you're disagreeing with a lot of what I'm saying, so I think it's important for you to get somebody, you're generically, to get those pieces together so we can talk about it. I mean, it's fine, didn't say that very well. We have differences of opinion, we need to get it laid out so we can actually talk about it, with the skeleton, your opinion.
I'll take a stab at it.
I'd be happy to help.
Thanks, John.
Excellent.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Excellent. All right, minutes.
I have just one very small thing. The very, very last line says the motion carried nine to zero. It was five to zero.
Really? Huh.
On page 26, in Tim Clark's comment, it says, he mentioned that initial discussions considered 10 units, but this number was reduced and written into the housing element, which I think is not accurate, and I reviewed the recording, and I would summarize it as, he mentioned that initial discussions considered 10 units, and that, and that number was written into the housing element, but they now expect to build fewer units.
Got that?
Yes, noted, thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes? I do not have any. I think we have to do.
They have good minutes.
Okay, I think we have to do oral public comments on the minutes. Let me open it up to public comments on the minutes. And I'm looking online. I am not seeing any public, anybody raising their hand. So I'm going to close public comments, and we're going to close the minutes. Let's see, staff reports, we need a, oh, we do, sorry, jumped right ahead, sorry. Voting on the minute, please.
Sure. Vice Chair Targ?
Aye.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Koppel?
Approved.
Aye.
Chair Golden?
Yeah, aye.
I'll be ready to move on.
Sorry. Thank you.
Let's see, let's see, do we have any staff reports or committee, commission reports?
I don't have any staff reports. Okay, so then.
I think we already did all our.
Yeah, I think our commission, our subcommittee met incessantly.
All right, and we need some sort of a motion to close?
So moved.
We adjourn.
Second?
I mean, that's, we can just do aye. Thank you, everyone.
Before 9:30, bravo.